Okay, it looks like we're shorthanded, but we have a quorum, so let's begin. Start with the roll call.
Councilman Peskew? Councilman Dooper?
President.
Mayor Rigsby?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Dooper. Please stand. Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Thank you. I have no requests, but are there any public comments anyone would like to make? There are some requests, okay. In the order I find them, Dick Wiley.
Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff, thank you. Sort of apologize for last Sunday. I won't apologize for the weather, because I don't have control of it. But they decided to cancel it on Thursday. And it'll be put on this Sunday, same place, same time. So you're more welcome to come over Sunday, nine to 11. And we should be there at Heritage Park. Well, I don't know. If that's the case, it'll be humid, because I hear it's gonna be 81. So I checked that last night, and seven-day forecast says 81, maybe some clouds. But I'm assuming after that, if the next weekend's open, it may go to that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then we'll move because of a lack of the three people to do item number one. We'll move to our consent calendar. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye. Aye. That's approved unanimously. Item number seven is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority, which I'm opening at this time, so that we can review our budget.
Do you want me to just? We had a workshop on May 2nd with the joint workshop with the Budget Committee and the Council to discuss the budget in detail. And then I was just gonna present the summary numbers. And basically, the only change was one change to the general fund for $12,900 that was added. And then there was some changes to the beginning balances for appropriations that were adopted at the last meeting. So, do you'd like me to go through the whole thing? As usual, we cover over the main budget. It is our operating fund, which is the general fund. We do the city as a whole, and then we do the Loma Linda Housing Authority. And then here, we highlight the general fund and the assignment of general funds. So we have unassigned fund balance, we have assigned, and then we have committed. This year, we are, we have 4.8 million in unassigned, which is basically kind of just we're proposing a budget that's really gonna yield us a fund balance of $24,000. So we're proposing to end the year still with 8 million in fund balance in the general fund. This shows more of just the use of unassigned fund balance with, we show the revenues compared to our expenditures and how we're gonna end in unassigned fund balance. So again, we're proposing a budget that will yield us a net positive of $24,000. Here, we highlight the top seven of our revenue sources. This kind of shows where kind of our eggs are in certain baskets. So our top yielding is our sales tax revenue, so, which we're showing increases overall in our total general fund budgets. The top one is sales tax. Then we have the overhead as well, which comes from other operating or other capital project funds that we don't charge personnel directly. So we do charge them an overhead fee for their operations. Then we have the VLF is the motor vehicle license and lieu fee. We have property tax, refuse services. We had a slight rate increase. Then we have the Loma Linda law enforcement for the sheriff's contract at the medical center, and then the franchise fees. So franchise fees is showing a little bit down. We have seen some drop in our Southern California Edison and the gas company for franchise fees.
Quick question. On the administrative overhead, what would you say are the top three revenue generating overhead?
We get some from the water fund.
Okay.
And then from capital project funds. So this year, probably see from our special projects fund. We'll be doing a major purchase out of the special project fund.
So all of those amounts can have a use for personnel, but are actually gonna end up being used for specific projects?
Well, the overhead comes into the general fund, which actually does pay for certain personnel.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So when we do a capital improvement projects using development impact fee, we charge 19.5% to overhead, because we do engineering in-house. We do construction inspection in-house, so there's audit accounting.
So those amounts, it's about 19% of other expenses? That's, that means we're doing quite a bit of capital improvements.
About $9.8 million.
Okay, alright.
This is our general fund expenditures. As you can see, there's a significant drop. We're dropping from 30 million to 23 million. Last year, well, this year, we decided to pay down our unfunded liability. So you'll see that huge expense there. So about 6 million came out of the general fund, so to pay off the person's unfunded liability. But otherwise, you'll see that it's not, it, when I was looking at it, it's not increasing significantly. You'll see some actual drops in like the fire department. There were some retirements this year, so there were retirement payouts that came out of the fire department. So you'll see the drop in the fire department. Community development, we're projecting a little bit of slowdown in kind of the permitting fees and the inspections, so there's a little slight drop in that. There is an increase in police services, general government. It's our insurance payment, basically, is the bulk of that, the insurance payment. And I believe the actual, what is it? The sheriff's, no, not the sheriff's service contract. The insurance payment, and then any general operational expenses come out of that, that are citywide expenses. And then administrative, basically, that's your city manager, city clerk, finance, your senior center, and those operations come out of the administrative. But overall, we are seeing a slight drop in expenditures. So if we look at the total general fund operations, we are starting with 8,071,000. We are projecting 23,000, I mean 23 million in revenue, 23 billion in expenditures. And so we are still ending up with 8 million, with a slight increase to 95,000. So that's our 24,400 increase in fund balance. And this shows the city as a whole. This shows all the funds. So you'll see the general fund included here, the special revenues, which are, could be grants, could be funding from states, just like gas tax and special revenues that are restricted in use. You'll see the capital projects funds in here, and you'll also see the enterprise funds in here as well. So that's our water sewer, our Loma Linda Connected Communities. Operations are all in here. So again, you'll see overall, there's a slight decrease in revenues. The major decrease is our, in our capital projects funds. We are seeing a downturn in development impact fees. And then this year, we are seeing increase in special revenue. We did get an additional Measure I funding for the California widening. And then we started receiving the SB 1 funding for the gas tax as well. So that's why you'll see an increase this year, but a drop in next year, mainly, again, the capital projects and the Measure I and certain special restricted funding. Expenditures, again, you'll see the higher increase, and that was the payment to the unfunded liability and retirement payouts, and then capital projects that were going on, so keeping Jarb busy. So again, you'll see that we are ending with $5 million less in the proposed budget. And again, like I said, that's mainly due to the unfunded liability payout. Here, you see the revenues by the fund categories. So you have the general fund, again. It shows it's a percentage of budget, and we're only showing a slight increase of 1%. You have the sewer fund, which is actually showing a decrease, and that basically interest earnings on the sewer fund. The LLCCP fund is pretty much stable. Water enterprise fund, we're seeing an increase in revenue. We had an increase in the rates. The capital fund, you're seeing just a decrease in capital. And then other funds, which are special revenue funds, again, you're seeing decrease in those sources. So we are seeing a decrease of about 6% in overall revenues. And here are the expenditures by fund category, again. Overall, I'm just gonna cover the totals, kinda covered some of the details. So we are seeing a decrease in total expenditures of about 10% citywide. And again, the major source of that is this year, we're having the payment to unfunded liability next year. But pretty, pretty much the major differences are that payment in the unfunded liability and capital expenditures. We are proposing this year, one major capital expenditure for the fire truck for the fire department, so that will be one of the major capital expenditures. So you do see that in the capital fund, the higher expenditures. So overall, we have a drop in fund balance for the citywide as a whole of 5 million. And then we have the Loma Linda Housing Authority. And pretty much, it's standard operations with the housing authority, where we don't have any new projects on the horizon. It's just collecting the revenue. We operate as a mortgage company to some of the low-income houses, so we collect the revenue for that. And then we do have operational expenses for maintenance, and then consultant services and legal fees. So that's the major operation for the housing authority. So we've been through this budget process several years, yeah? This is the standard ending, that we still have a 4.8 million in unassigned fund balance. We have 1.2 million in assigned balance, which is for our capital replacement fund. And then we do have 2 million in our committed fund, which is our rainy day fund. So we still have 8,000,000.1 in our general fund revenue. And again, we are very conservative and very careful in projecting our revenues and expenditures for the city as a whole. And I believe Jarb, you gonna present the CIP, or do we wanna invite the Budget Committee? At this time, we want to invite the Budget Committee Chair to come and...
Now, the Budget Committee like, would like to thank the City Council and staff for allowing us to work on this. You guys are making it kind of difficult for us, because there's not a whole lot of bad stuff going on in the city. One of our biggest complaints, if, a few years ago, even last year, one of the biggest complaints that we had was unfunded liability. And the opportunity came for, I believe, a very unique opportunity, to come and pay that down, to make the payments a lot more structured in the future. Makes the city more stable. But what allowed that was all the years in planning from all the other councils putting into the reserves. And that's what made that possible. So we recommend, we applaud you guys, and he's taken the big step, spending it, which is a huge thing to come out of the budget. As you could see, the impact is pretty large. But at the same time, the reason why it was available was everybody for many years, sometimes by twisting arms and everything else, to keep on putting into it. So this year, one of the recommendations is start this year. When there's any surplus that comes in, which historically it does happen, keep in mind that the reserve is a valuable tool, and if left on its own, it won't be very valuable very long. And so we want you to put that in there. Another one is, if there's anything left over, again, putting into the vehicle fund, to be able to keep that going. We got it going, we got it tracked, we now have to keep on trying to keep it funded. We're millions behind on that one now. But at least we're heading in the right direction. If any extra revenue comes in, that's where it can go and be placed in. Other than that, we fully complete with the, what the budget is going, where it is, and wholly hold... If there's any other comments from, nope? They're happy with it, so am I. So, any other questions?
We got a picture again on what that pay down provided us, because I've asked a couple of times, but we really haven't heard from the budget.
We haven't gotten an official, I mean, we got the new payment, which reduced our payments by about 200,000 for each of the major plans. But we've decided in the current budget to budget it at a certain level, so we're actually continuing to pay a little bit more.
Do you know what unfunded is left, do you remember? Is it less than half?
It's, yeah. Until they come out with the new report.
Yeah, it's a moving target.
Okay, thank you.
If no one else, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm the latecomer, I was waiting for everybody else. I believe I heard you say, and I'm getting a little long in the tooth and whitening the hair, but I believe at the beginning of your comments, you said you guys are making it tough. And I was listening to hear how we were making it tough, and I'm not sure I quite got the message.
Well, a few years ago, it was easier for us to have a lot more...
Can you point the mic up to your...
If we have a lot more things to complain about. So it's getting really hard. It's tough for us to make a complaint.
Okay.
There's a positive coming.
Okay, okay, okay. Because I seek accolades, but I don't always recognize them, obviously.
Thank you very much.
I think we all just really appreciate you guys, because you guys are really the ones that make it happen, and then you allow us to sit up here and take credit for it. So Jay, you guys are all the ones that make this happen. So, yeah, stand up and bow. But thank you.
Gary Nelson tells me it's all because of him, so I take him at his word.
And Mary Cook, she read every line. Good evening. I'm gonna provide a brief report on the five-year CIP. This is arrow pictures of the intersection at Redlands and California. It's now completed. We just received an award for the project of the year from American Society Civil Engineer for the project improvement for 2019, so intersection of Redlands and California. Little introduction, every year, we go through five-year CIP, come up with a project for next five years, and then the potential funding source, where the money coming from to spend on, for paying, to do a project. We divided the CIP into seven category, fleet, general building, park recreation, sewer, storm drain, street and street light, and water. So potential funding source, we go through this, a lot of them come from a developing impact fee, a half cent cell tax, SB 1 money, sewer, water, storm drain, capital improvement funding. So for fleet, what I would like to do is, I'd like to concentrate on this next fiscal year, 2019, 2020. And what this are, are the project that approve, will be approved for this fiscal year. And the future years, for the four, the next four years, is kind of wish list, that if we have money, we will do it. So for this year, for fleet, we plan to purchase a new ladder truck, it's a cost of 1.6 million dollar. We will replace one pickup truck for 40,000, and then a new lawnmower. That will be replaced for next fiscal year. At the same time, we have a table that Jay comment, mentioned about, is we have a list of all the vehicle that the city own, and when we purchase it, the life expectancy of each vehicle, and how much money we should set aside to replace those vehicle. We have a list, and we showed it to Jay, Budget Committee. Next, for the building, it's a lot of routine maintenance. We replace the air conditioning, replace the lights fixtures, ADA compliant, fire station. Number one, we plan to do an EOC expansion, and then also doing the remodel of the dorm at the fire station, and also a little improvement to the existing library. This year, we replaced the flooring on the first floor, and next year, we're gonna replace the flooring on the mezzanine and down at the lower ground. For park projects, we plan to have a number of projects at, we do tree planting every year. We'll install a security camera, replace really a security camera at various park location. We plan to have Arden Public Place. We plan to do improvement at Heritage Park, and Hodor Crooks Park, Alma Digna Park, Bailey Park. So we have a lot of park projects that are coming next fiscal year. For sewer, we don't have a lot of money in the sewer fund, so next year, we plan to replace existing sewer inside the Jansen Mobile Home Park. It's a city sewer that in the eastment within the Mobile Home Park. On the south side, Redlands and Richardson, so that will be a project for next fiscal year for sewer fund. Next, storm drain fund, again, we don't have a lot of money in the storm drain fund leaders. So next year, we plan to do a small storm drain project at the intersection of San Lucas and San Marcos. It's pretty steep slope here, at this street. And then this year, when it rain, the water kind of shoot across the street and go into the person's house at the end of San Lucas. So what we plan to do is, we plan to install a storm drain, catch basin on both side of San Lucas, intercept the water first, and then drain into the existing open dish right here, and go into the existing storm drain at Barton Road. For street improvement, for next fiscal year, we currently have a project at I-10 and Mountain View to wind off ramp, is under construction. We've been doing a part-holing, and we've been working with Caltrans to get permit for traffic control for doing construction. We plan to spend $80,000 to replace a sidewalk at various locations. We plan to do an Anderson Street pavement rehabilitation from Barton all the way to Stewart Street, and we plan to do roundabout at the intersection of Anderson and Mau. We plan to do a pavement rehabilitation of Barton Road between Campus and Benton. Street improvement at Richardson, Acacia, Hill Crest, Crestview. This area right here, we plan to replace the existing water main first, and then after that's completed, we plan to grind overlay the street. We also plan to grind pave Shepperson from Mau to Benton, and then Pablo Street, Bel-Air, Lamar, and Taylor Street. So that's part of next year pavement rehabilitation projects. And then looking to put in the Barton Road, I mean Redlands median, on Redlands Boulevard from Mountain View to Anderson. So let's see what we can do to little, do a little beautification and along Redlands Boulevard. Yes, we can put a street light in the middle, yes. Because the street is pretty dark at night along Redlands Boulevard. For the water light improvement, we plan, again, replace the remaining water meters, replace a valve. We plan to replace the wall line up Anderson Way, right here, from Lawton to the reservoir, and then replace the water main in this area right here. And replace the water main down in Bel-Air, from Barton to Shepperson. So that's be a project for next year. And after we complete, after we complete all of that, we will pave the street, so. That's it. So we have a lot to do for next fiscal year as far as capital improvement go. So, any question? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Couple, I think, easy ones. I've been, had a couple of, not a lot, but I've had a couple of people talk with me about concern about Hodor Crooks Park after the sun goes down. Are there security cameras up there?
Yes.
And we get the feed at the city, and we review those, if there's an incident reported, or how does that work?
Conrad.
Yeah, if there, if there's an incident reported, then we'll review, and we do not live monitor them.
Yeah, if there's, if there's an incident reported, then we'll review them, we do not live monitor them.
Right.
Or routinely review them, it's only, only as reported.
Okay. And what does that cover, the parking lot, the issues that I've heard about are in the parking lot. Do they cover anything beyond the parking lot?
There may be a little overlap into some of the grass area, but it's mostly focused on the parking lot, with the assumption that it'll be some form of vehicle problem.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense. What is the timetable for the Anderson Roundabout?
We have, we have this completed design, for, preliminary design for the roundabout. I plan to ask the traffic engineer to come over, present it to you at the next meeting, and then present it to university. We come up, we came up with two designs, one with the, with the bicycle lane, and one without the bicycle lane. The one with a bicycle lane will require, take out a lot of their parking spaces, I mentioned them earlier. So that was something that I have to talk to the university about.
Okay. And part of the premise of my question is that intersection is more or less busy depending on what time of the year it is.
Yes, yes.
And of course, end of September, when the fall quarter picks up, it gets pretty intense.
Yes.
Probably the most intense. That's why I'm asking, are we, are, how long before we get the engineer study? How long will it take to construct? And are we going to booger everything up when students are here to try to register?
Yes. Well, I have been working with the university, if you look at majority of the project that we plan to do for next fiscal year, Barton Road, Anderson, Shepperson.
Yeah.
It's all around the campus, so my goal is, when you're ready to open ribbon-cutting for the new hospital, I would like to have all of this street improvement completed, including art and public place that we plan to do around university, on Barton Road, on Anderson, especially the roundabout. And in addition to just the roundabout, I plan to do hardscape landscaping around the area.
Okay. And you already anticipated the obvious follow-up from Daley, and that is, what is the landscaping in the roundabout?
Yes. I will be working with, I already mentioned to, with the university, we'll be working with him, and see how much the university will maintain, and we will maintain. And we'll, we'll be part of more likely contract somewhere out.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that's, in my view, that's an important
Yes.
part of this whole plan. If you have a cheesy-looking roundabout, then it may be functional, but it's not going to be very aesthetically attractive. And since that's the major thoroughfare into the University and Medical Center, it would seem to me that I, how much the city pays, how much the medical center, university, whatever, that I'm not so concerned about. What I am concerned about is that it be, it be maintained and physically attractive
Yes.
year-round.
Yes, yes, that's my goal. And at the last city council meeting, the city council did approve adding this project, funding for this project to the SBCTA, measure I from them, so hopefully the mayor approved that at the last
Yeah, hopefully.
SBCTA meeting, it was that last week or this week? Anyway.
Next week.
Next week, okay, then next week.
He's Mr. SBCTA, so I'm sure it'll all work out.
So hopefully we get another $621,000 from them.
At least.
Yes.
Okay, as long as that's on the priority list.
Yes, yes, sir, and I will be happy to, after we completed the design and the landscape, I will bring it back to the city council. We showed it once already, but I want, I want to do some more.
Okay, thank you.
To get your input, yes, sir. That's it?
Okay, the next item is a council bill for approving the adjusted appropriations limit. So is there, does it need any description?
It's just our annual, we have to do a calculation to make sure we're within the appropriations limit that the state provides us with. It gets adjusted every year based on our per capita income and our population numbers, so. We're well with it, well underneath our limit.
So there's a cap on how much cities can spend?
Mm-hmm.
So how do places like Los Angeles survive?
It's like I said, it's based upon population, and then what year their property taxes or their revenue base was, so. Then they provide us an annual growth factor that we increase those.
Okay. I'd just as soon do all of these council bills at the same time, but what's, that's okay to do that?
Yes, they're all part of the budget process. The individual items, well, the first two presentations, you don't need to take action on, but the others, C through K. If you list those, you could take action on them together.
Okay, do any other items require a presentation?
I don't see anybody jumping up, I'd like to pull H eight, and learn more about that. And I just got back into town, so I'm not totally up to speed if I didn't do all my homework.
Okay, then let's discuss H eight.
As I, you've been asking me to maintain the highway on off-ramp, so what I did is I contacted Adopted Highway. And the reason we contacted Adopted Highway to maintain our off-ramp and on-ramp is because they already have a contract and permit with Caltrans. The city cannot go in just do the maintain, so what we did, in addition to before, they just pick up the debris. What I asked them to do is, in addition to pick up debris every twice a month, to pick up debris and pull weeds at the same time. So that will cost us $500 a month for doing both. And, but initial cost will be about $5,000 to pull weed first, and then, so. And then maintain it to both pulling weeds and pick up debris. No, right now it's just
Mountain View.
At Mountain View, yes, yes. So hopefully you're okay with that, and I will
I'm so excited, I'm about ready to dig in my pocket and help fund it.
To do both, sir.
We expect to see your name on the sign. Okay, are you satisfied with that? Okay, is there a motion on all the? C through K. And I think we need to call them out individually?
Well, you would want to, for the record, list them.
Okay. We can't just reference them.
I think he's referring to, to the actual ordinance.
Council bills?
Yeah. And I'll second that.
Do we have to call out also the other items, or just the council bills? Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, the purpose for this exercise is to make sure the public is aware of the action that is being taken. And that could be, as part of the motion, we're all looking at the agenda which has them all listed and described with some brief description. The public can't see that, and so we're required either as part of the motion, or you could announce after the vote, the action that's taken with some reference to the nature of each item.
Okay, so there's a motion, and there's a second for the council bills, and items C, E, F, G, H, I, well, all the rest of the letters, which we will announce afterwards, okay. So any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no, that is approved unanimously. And what we just passed was the five-year capital improvement program, approving the adjusted appropriations limit, the investment policy, the COPS grant expenditure plan, Schedule A pertaining to the contract with the Sheriff's Department, an extension of annual service contracts for the next year for multiple public works services, the wildland fire protection contract. The, we adopted the fiscal year budget for 2019 to 2020 for both council and for the housing authority. So that's what we passed unanimously. The Adopt a Highway program was one of them, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you, Diana, and staff, and finance, and all the department head, and the Budget Committee for really working with me and get this budget done on time, on schedule, so. And balanced budget too, so thank you.
Great work by all involved. Thank you. Okay, next we have item number one. I'm going to I'm just going to start by opening the public hearing, even though we're going to have a presentation. Public hearing is opened, and you get to leave. You don't, it's going to be brief.
You, Mr. Mayor, can you do the succession, six?
What, so he can leave?
Yes. The other two agendas have a couple consent calendar items.
Okay, well, okay, so I'm being overruled, item number one can wait till the end, even though it's numbered one. Okay, the housing authority, we already opened before, are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on any non-agenda items? Seeing none. The consent calendar needs approval. Motion, a second, any further discussion, hearing none. Any opposition, hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any member reports, any reports of officers, hearing none, the housing authority is adjourned. Then we have the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Consent calendar?
Move it.
There's a motion, a second, any further discussion, hearing none. Any opposition, hearing none, it's approved unanimously, and that agenda is adjourned, and now we're back to number one. And we'll bid adieu to our conflicted member.
It's in effect, but it's, it's just already budgeted, it's not an annual contract that's renewed, it's on its own timeline. So it's not, yeah, yeah, actually, we've already taken a couple of, we've brought them a few presents already. And actually, we're very happy with what's going on, they've been great to, in the startup process and to work with. So we appreciate that. So this is a minor modification to an already approved sign program, and a development agreement for an arrival sequencing sign program with Loma Linda University Health. We've been, you guys saw the original sign program about a year ago. We've done some modifications, we've worked through the, really, the fine details, and then also worked up the agreement on utilization of art and public places funds, and allowing them to work in the public right-of-way, because some of these signs are in the public right-of-way. So this is a minor, like I said, a minor modification of a, what's a comprehensive sign program. Usually sign programs are done site by site, comprehensive means it's over multiple sites, multiple pieces of property. And this isn't, is in cooperation with Loma Linda University Health. We kind of, just kind of review what we have. We looked at some, some wayfinding methods and how to get people to where they're supposed to be in the city. And we have, we have a pretty big problem with that, getting people to the emergency room, to the right doctor's offices, to the right places. So what we've looked at is, is that there's a, kind of the freeway sign that we can see on the freeway, get off on Barton Road, or get off on Anderson, to get to where we want to go. And then we're looking at some internal signs throughout the city to first, to mark when you're near the university or near to a specific facility, and then to give some wayfinding and direction at, from, to general large areas, and then down to a fairly smaller, more granular direction finding. These are all fairly large signs, you can kind of see how tall these are with a bus and a car. Even, you know, these things are 10 or 12 feet tall, so they're fairly large, fairly visible. And it creates a sequence of signage from, once you're on the freeway at the entrance to the city, down to the arrival point, and beyond what we're approving for the city piece, there is on-campus signage that will take that granular down to the point to the actual room you're supposed to be to. So the goal is not to have people wandering around and lost and looking for where they're going. We are looking at a development agreement with this, so the sign details, the sign permit requirements, resolves the construction and the maintenance portion of that. And it's fairly detailed on what the maintenance requirements are, and also the replacement of the existing artwork and a replacement schedule, and who's responsible for that, which would be Loma Linda University Health. But we want to make sure that we're not just building it, that there's some mechanism in there to keep them maintained fresh, and that any artwork or any messages on that stay current and not stale, and actually move around, so you're not driving by and seeing the same picture over and over again. And then, kind of, the creative part of this is we're using art and public place funds as part of the new campus transformation plan, the new hospital. They will be generating a significant amount of funds for art and public place. There's a couple of methods that that can be dealt with, is they can basically give us the money, and then we go out and find art to put up wherever we feel is appropriate. Another mechanism is, is that they can, you know, and done in the past, go buy a statue, put it in a quad, call it, you know, call it art, and they have, they have met that accomplishment through this process. What we've come up with is a mechanism that we can get fresh vibrant messages out into the community, provide some appealing art that's out on the street, not locked up in a quad or inside, you know, a courtyard someplace, and that we can also dovetail this into the wayfinding, you know, needs that we have for the city. So this is a mechanism that we can use these funds in a comprehensive and positive manner. Some about 3.2 million. So it's not quite a Mona Lisa or David, but it is, were they to go out and get some art, it's some significant art. So we've kind of got an idea of what these, what these things would look like, so, and this is not, right now it's around the Loma Linda campus. The project itself and the design is a citywide project and design, it also incorporates direction finding from the VA and from other, other large institutions, the heart and surgery. And so the larger places people are trying to get to, we want to make sure that we can get them to the right place. Yeah, actually, the, there's a couple of pieces of coding, and I want to make sure I'm right on this. So on these, you can kind of see the city crest is always on top. And then the closest institution that you would probably go to is the next one, kind of the next crest, and then the secondary institution would be the VA. So if these signs were to be here around City Hall, they would be flipped with VA on top, Loma Linda on the bottom. So that you, it kind of already cues you, and the sign would be more of a VA blue than a Loma Linda burgundy or red. So the, and the same thing with these, this would be more of a VA blue in the proper zone. So we're trying to give some cuing outside of just the written directions, so that somebody knows they're looking for VA, they know they're looking for their blue, and we kind of get them on that path that way as well. Like I said, these are fairly tall signs, these things are, you know, sixteen, almost 16 feet. You know, the ones that'll be, the sixteen feet, you know, the ones that'll be, the more granular pieces, we've got some that, you know, same thing, twelve, fourteen feet, that more threshold areas that let you know you're in a, on campus, or in the, the campus area. This down here in the corner, over the street stuff, and what we've done is, the, you can kind of see the sign, this is the backside, and what we wanted to do is have some artistic elements, not just on the, the front panels, but also on the back, so we're kind of trying to hide the big sign and get a little bit, something a little more visually interesting as you're leaving town also. These are mockups of the art, don't, don't judge the art yet.
And before you move to the next slide, particularly the vertical signage, what material is that? Is that metal, is it ceramic, or?
It'll be a-
Electronic, or what are we talking about?
A polycarbonate, and they'll be backlit. So these, these bigger signs-
Yeah.
Like this, will be backlit, so that at night, they'll have, they'll be glowing and visible, they're not going to be dark. It's basically a opaque plastic, and so you, the signs, this one, these will not be, but the back of these bigger signs will, will be inside a cabinet, so when you're driving by at night, those signs will be visible and lit as well.
Okay, and so my follow-up question is, for those that have walked past the front of Prince Hall, the School of Dentistry, there are some ceramic signs out in front regarding, kind of describing the history of the dental school. We did a lot of research on that, because a lot of this, these sign materials will fade, particularly in Southern California sun, and if you look at those, they've been out there for, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, and they haven't faded at all, and that was because of our research. So, that's my question about this, is some of this stuff gonna start fading out a month, a year, or, okay, we got an answer behind you. We have a vast viewing audience, so they want to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, everybody. So, the, the sign itself is made of a polycarbonate material. I mean, you could take a bat to it, and it shouldn't crack, it's pretty strong. It is a, a digital print that goes on there, but part of the agreement on the maintenance is that we're gonna be switching out art, so we either have to relocate the art every couple years, or within a four-year period, that image has to be changed. So the digital print will never get old or faded, because at that point, the maintenance schedule will require that we replace it.
And so, so the research has been done to document it'll hold up for at least a couple of years?
Oh, definitely, digital print should hold its color and everything for about five years, and, and so we're actually replacing the image before that. So, we should be good. That, that's part of the maintenance schedule that we had, and part of the agreement of changing out the artwork, is that at some point, we want to keep everything fresh, but at the same time, we, we don't think, want things getting faded and old. So, we, we do have a maintenance schedule that's factored into the public art and the signs themselves, and that was something that we refined on the second round, and that's part of the minor modification, is making those clarifications in order to make sure that we're confident that these signs are gonna hold up and be maintained.
Okay.
Does it withstand graffiti?
There's a anti-graffiti element that they put into the sign, but, I mean, depending on how hard somebody vandalizes it, I mean, it's possible that we might have to replace a panel, depending on how much effort is put into trying to deface it, so.
You gotta think about these things, though. I mean, if somebody drives by and shoots holes through it, how long does it take to replace it?
Our sign vendor, Yescow, is in Riverside, and, and all these pieces can be fabricated fairly quickly, and they keep a lot of this type of material in the shop. So I would imagine we should be able to get a, probably a, I, I would think if we moved on it quickly, a week.
Okay, no, that's good, that's great, yeah.
And, and so we're excited about this, just to let you know, we, we already have the public art contest did end, and we started the voting process internally, so things are moving along, and, and we are at the point of pulling a permit possibly next week, because we've gone through the, the planning review, so everything's moving along really well.
And, and what office, and I don't want to jump ahead of Conrad's presentation, so maybe we should finish that, and then I've got a couple of other questions.
I have a question. Are those actual monkey bars, or just pictures of monkey bars on the bottom right?
Pictures, we won't be hanging people's-
It'd be a thrill ride, but probably not safe.
Yeah, but, but, we'll, we'll make sure they're digital images, just to keep the liability down.
So, yeah, there'll be pictures of people. And as Curtis said, there is, there's a maintenance schedule and a rotation schedule, with the idea that first, the signs aren't, the same sign isn't in all the, the same place all the time, that we can change the message, and that there is fresh material coming up. These are also on expanded metal panel that are on a, the same, the panels are taken out and replaced as well. So, it, for the environmental, there, there are no environmental impacts, it's exempt from CEQA, and so staff does recommend approval, I did, of the minor modification, and I did kind of jump one spot, because I know you're gonna ask where, and so, the, the larger, the larger threshold sign, signs, kind of, the welcome to Loma Linda type sign, the, the ones we have, the monuments now, in, in, at Anderson and Academy, letting you know you're on the campus area. No, no, this is, this is a threshold sign, letting you know that you're kind of in the university, in, in that medical district area. The gateway signs are kind of the, the over-the-road signage, like, like a freeway sign. We'll have gateway signs at, at, right off Academy, at past Stewart Street, and then we'll also have over-the-road signs, you know, down here at Stewart and Campus, coming, coming up on Stewart, and those would be the ones that'll have the more- Gateway will be a sign that's over the road, kind of a, like, like a road sign, but more art, the over-the-road is more of a directional sign, so what, the over-the-road will have the, you know, ER to the right, dental school to the left, Drayson Hall, wherever, so those will, those will be much more-
And that's Blue Number Two at Stewart and Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, I'm concerned about, I mean, I've been retired for a couple of years, but I am concerned that if you go past Stewart Street on the right side, is University Court, I think is what it's called now, and, there's nothing that directs people to the School of Dentistry there, and that's a problem, because that's where most of the park, the parking access is, and it's, I mean, I can justify this ad nauseam if you want me to, but I know you don't want me to.
I believe there is one, it's not on here, but I can pull up the list.
Actually, so, that's where, where you have number three, right there before Stewart Street, it has a DOT panel, and it says Dental Clinic straight ahead, and as you go up to University Court-
This one here? Yeah. No, University Court's south of where you're at.
As you get to University Court, we're actually, you know, right at the corner there, we're actually putting in a monument sign there that says Dental Clinic.
Okay, well, it doesn't show up, so.
It doesn't show up here, because that's not, it's, that's on private property, and it's a monument sign, so it's part of a different sign.
So what's the difference between a monument sign and what we're talking about?
A monument sign's a little wider, it, it just has a slightly different configuration. It, it basically defines the destination you're at.
So, a monument, a monument is more like a shopping center, the short, the shorter, wider sign that lets you know you've arrived at your destination.
Okay.
And the, these are the ones that will be in the public right-of-way. There will be an extensive amount of signs on the pri, once you get, on the private property, because we, we will allow them, but we're looking for right-of-way agreements with, for them, for the stuff for those-
I'm not just pushing for dentistry, but we treat between six hundred and a thousand patients a day, so it is kind of a big deal, so I appreciate it.
It is, and there's, there's also signage, once you get down into some of the, the buildings in here, to the, you know, the parking lots-
Tells them they're in the wrong place?
Let them know you're in the wrong place, or the right parking lot, and those type of things. So, there, this is just the stuff that is, is in the right-of-way, that would take right-of-way permits. But, the overarching sign program covers dozens and dozens of locations on private and public property.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. So, will our city monument signs then come onto this, will be redesigned?
The monuments coming into the city?
Yes, I, we did look into them, this is more expensive. Right? Yes. Who's paying for it? Right now, they do, but eventually, you have to pay for it, one of the ones you saw, residents in California, residents in Waterman, you know, yes.
Okay, so that brings up a good point, sorry, my next question. So, the gateway and over-the-road signs, who dictates what is displayed on those signs?
We will.
Will it be removable, temporary, permanent?
It's, it's like a freeway sign, it's reflective, permanent, but as this goes out, we, it's, it's been a joint process from the beginning, so there's campus committees that have come up and said, look, these are the places, the dental school and other places, people can't get to or get lost to, so we're providing that direction, and then we've worked with them on which one goes first, which one goes second, you know, maybe you think this is important, we don't, you know, I think Drayson Center was on that cut and didn't make it at some point, so they've, they've juggled around, and, and it's a joint agreement on that. Ultimately, the city can make that decision.
Okay, so the over-the-road sign on, on the southern side of Anderson, towards the street, is that gonna replace that over-the-road sign that's currently there?
That banner thing? Yes.
So who owns that banner?
The university.
But that's in public right-of-way, or?
Yes, yes.
Was that ever permitted?
I believe so.
And what are the, what are the rules and regulations surrounding it?
They, I don't know, I know we don't have, we can't tell them what to put up on it. It is- We, I don't know, we've never asked.
Because of the structure of the city road?
Right.
But, but, because you're pernac, you're a man for reelection.
I, I don't, I don't know if, if, I'm sure if we asked, they'd, they'd be accommodating, but I don't know that we've ever asked.
So, so that that will be removed and replaced?
So, part of the, when we had the traffic study done, and they showed the line of sight, we have to, there's two banner rungs, and we're having to low, oh, we're, we're having to low, we're having to remove the lower banner rung, because we have to make sure that we don't have visibility obstructions. The marketing department likes using the banners, so we preserve that, but the LED display will be obviously communicating a lot of the events that go on, so that bottom LED display that's on the bottom of the over-the-road sign, it'll allow up to twelve-inch lettering, twenty-five feet across, it'll have a communication that can say, go to Drayson Center event, turn left, or turn right to go to Wong Curly, so it'll be, it'll, it'll allow us to get people to different events. We have over a hundred and twenty events a year at the, the campus, so it'll, it'll be very productive. At the same time, people still like the element of, of having banners, and so the marketing department was very happy that we were able to save at least one communication going across the road there.
So, who else would have access to put stuff up such a, could we put stuff up, like community events, or say, cheaper commerce, or things like that?
On the reader, the electronic portion? Yes, I'm sure we could work something with them to where we could-
Stipulated people would sign us?
Do we have something in that?
It was something that we hadn't discussed before, I can take it back to leadership to get a, a clear answer for you, if, if, I have no objection to that. I, I, I think it's a reasonable request, but I'm not in a position to speak for the university, since, since it's just an item that came up.
I'm, I'm, I'm advocating for something that we think that we might hear about a little bit, for your thoughts, comment?
Sorry. Sorry, is that better? For the television audience? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm advocating for something that came up, that I know about, and that is probably just a misunderstanding, and I realize none of the parties here are, are the, are the parties that were involved, well, one of the parties is, but, and it has to do with our Chamber of Commerce wanting to access that banner that stretches over the city roadway, and there was, initially, my understanding is some absolute agreeance from the president of the university, and then when the Chamber of Commerce actually approached employees, they were met with not only resistance, but severe resistance. And so, where I'm kind of inclined to go with this is to get something in writing for all of these types of devices, especially since they go over the city roadways, that basically, that there's some type of sharing agreement, or some type of access agreement that, that provides, and, you know, and it, the way I look at the, the chamber is directly tied to the city, so I would say access from the city, not just everybody, I, I wouldn't want it to be a, a rental sign where anybody could get to it or anything like that, but since this is an agreement between us and you guys, I, I would just like to codify something. And my, my understanding is, Dr. Hart, I believe, at least from the initial conversations, was a hundred percent supportive of using that existing device out there, but when the chamber actually approached some staff members, they were actually met with some very rude resistance. So, I'm, I, I wasn't certain in, I'm sorry, I start, I tried to read through the staff report, but it was a little long, so I didn't get a chance to get through it, because I was just wondering if there was anything codified where we could have those agreements in place, so.
That is something that even, even upon your approval, you can do it with the condition that we come up with some type of an agreement. I think that's something that both parties can work out, that there is, is the ability for the city and, and very clearly defined, so you can't have, you know, mattress mart advertising, but the, the city or some very specific entities have a, have the ability to put messages on the, the reader boards.
I don't think anybody's gonna try to take advantage of that, but I mean, from time to time, there are city events that I think this is a legitimate issue that would potentially benefit Loma Linda Health as well.
Could we invite the chamber director up here to get maybe a little clarification on what she was looking for, and where?
I will reiterate that the public comment is open.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I'm Karen McCullough, and I run the chamber. We had a banner made for the farmer's market, we got it up there two weeks, and we had more people those two nights than we had had any other night, and to get that banner up there, it was like pulling teeth. I had to call Dr. Hart's off. First, I filled out the application, the girl sent it back, said, okay, I'll call you and let you know what the schedule is. Within probably ten minutes, she called me, and she said, I ran this by my supervisor, and she said, absolutely not, and I said, who's your supervisor? And she said, I'll send you an email. Ten minutes after that, Victor was in my office, and she called and said that she had spoken to legal, and that legal said we could not absolutely put anything up there. So I said, can you send it to me in writing? She did, and then I proceeded to talk to Jarb and Conrad, and they said, it's the university, and they, we can't do anything about it. So then I went to Dr. Hart, they said, absolutely, it's a community event, went back, sent an email, she wanted to know who I got permission from, I mean, it's just been a nightmare, very frustrating. And there's a lot of community events that go on that would be great to have advertising in the city, it's, people don't read newspapers anymore, it's hard to get information out. So I would like that it be in writing, because ten years from now, when somebody else is in my job, they can do it.
Well, and that's kind of my concern, is that I, I asked about that banner device, and what are the rules surrounding it, and nobody here at the city seems to know. So I have concern about that, because that's never been codified anywhere, and like you just said, I think in today's world, we have to have things written down, because most of us won't be here, and we couldn't, yeah. So, that, that's just my thought and concern, and I'm not sure what to do with that, or any suggestions that staff might have. And, and I understand we could approve this, that you could then put in that agreement afterwards, but I, I had actually was hoping this was something you guys would talk out before we even got to tonight, but I think all this stuff just happened too quickly before everything was posted.
Well, the ba, the banner stuff is a new thought, and is hap, is unfir-
Well, the banner stuff is a new thought and is unfurling as we go. But yeah, we're, I think it's reasonable. I don't see reason that we would, we would not insist on that. So to have it codified is, is not a problem. And we can approach it either way. We can bring it back with that, that attitude, or you can give us direction to come up with whatever the parameters are to incorporate it, whichever way you want to.
And for the record, I love this project. I thought it was fabulous when we looked at it last year. I'm eagerly waiting to see these come up. I think they're going to really beautify the entire city and campus. And also, some of us, as I was listening to your five-year CAP, I thought, oh, it's just very coincidental that he's taking care of all the downtown right in time for 2020. That's all by design. I know we want, we want the community to look good and be ready for all of that. So I know there's some timelines here. But from a legal standpoint, I do feel like we should get something in writing.
Whichever way you choose to direct us.
No, I, I support my colleague, Councilman Duper. I think that if, you know, if there's a risk that the city's going to start promoting something kind of cheesy, then I can understand reservations on the university because they want something dignified and emblematic of, of the stature of a university. I don't think that's a risk here. And I don't blame the university or Loma Linda University Health. I mean, I can tell you that things happened at the staff level that, in the School of Dentistry that appalled me from time to time. And I kind of claim not to know anybody, but you know, ultimately it happens. So you would be comfortable taking this back to the university and saying, in, in the context of a collegial working relationship and recognizing that we would want to do this with class and dignity and something to enhance the community, that that would be appropriate?
So would there be a motion tonight that everything else is approved? Contingent upon an agreement then on the banner and the LED? I'm, just so I'm clear, because I, I know that you guys have reviewed everything else.
Yeah, you're, I'm flying by the seat of my pants here, okay? I hadn't heard about this or aware of it, but I think again, in the spirit of collegiality, it should be something that we're willing and able to do. And, you know, I don't want to hold up a project because this is a big deal, and I recognize this, and it's something that's not only needed for the future in 2020, it's been needed for a while now. And, and I, so I recognize the urgency and the quest for quality, but I think in the spirit of being collegial for us to be able, us, the city, to be able to, at a minimum, apply to utilize some of the right of way on this thing would be appropriate. And I would certainly support and encourage that. I don't like to assume from the beginning, an adversarial position, that we're going to hold the whole project hostage to that.
So if you were to give me some direction, are we, what are we looking for is a community type of events specifically?
I think however you work that out with the city, I, I don't, I don't want to overreach or overextend. I would say just stuff related to the city, but understanding that like the chamber is basically an extension of the city government here.
Are you guys talking about the physical banner strung across the string?
I'm talking about all of it.
Are you talking about the, the LED lights?
I'm potentially talking about all of it, but it all depends on comfort level. So I don't want to.
It would also have to be, there's got to be some kind of a prioritization thing.
Oh, 100%, 100%, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, like you can't do it right in the middle of APC or something like that.
So to, from what, from talking to Karen, when I talked to her a few days ago, that was part of the coordination with the current banner, was she had to wait for specific times when it was not being used for graduation, things like that. So I think those things are understood. That's why I'd be, I'd be a little hesitant to try to kind of finalize that all here from the dais. I think that has to be discussion on how that would look with staff and what they think is appropriate or not appropriate, and, and craft some language. Because potentially, it affects all of this, and not just the stuff you guys have, the stuff the VA has, the stuff that, that we're paying for on our side with you having direct access to that stuff. Not even, I know Jarb's too cheap to do it, but what if we put up an LED sign somewhere way over at the end of the city? You know what I mean?
We did, we did put up an LED sign. Right out there.
But it all brings up a very good point. I mean, this is a partnership over, over wayfinding and sharing of all this signage and stuff, so.
Ronald McDonald put up an LED sign and she talked them into using it.
I would suggest that you guys probably knock it out. Now, now that we've, we've heard this presentation now twice, based on what we heard last year and all that, I mean, it could just be something that's on a consent calendar down the road. We don't necessarily have to, as long as all the parties are good with it, but I'd rather you get some.
Part of, part of my concern is I'm, I'm concerned that legal said it wasn't allowed. Can you comment on, I know it's difficult to second guess the legal counsel of another corporation, but, but what would be the basis for saying that you couldn't put up a chamber thing on a private sign strung across a public road?
I mean, that becomes adversarial, so I'm frankly offended by that. But what is, what is, what is the legal issue?
I think the comment that, that I had heard was that, and whatever, I don't want it to make it about the employee, but the employee said, I'm going to check with legal, and then like five minutes later called back. And so the comment was, there's no way that they checked with legal because you wouldn't even be able to get a lawyer to be quiet for that long.
Sometimes they answer really fast, and they don't bill by the 10th of an hour either.
Correct. It's a very good point. So I, I, we don't know if that actually occurred, you know what I mean? But that was my concern, is it is over a public right of way.
That's probably something that I could address with their legal counsel if, if there is a concern on their side. If you wish to move approval tonight of the minor modification and the development agreement, you could make that subject to final review and approval by city manager and the city attorney to include some language to require collaborative use of the digital message board for community events as approved by the city.
Well, I think this is an opportunity to look at that, that banner too, not just the new signage that's coming in, the existing signage. And so the other thing is that, I would say the, so folks, the residents here, the town, the businesses and whatever, we're their advocates, so they're, they're going to come to us. So if we hand this off to staff and say, hey, we approve this with whatever staff wants to put together, and that's not, that doesn't make the constituent happy, then who do they come to? So I do think it probably has to come back in front of, in front of council as long as everybody's happy with it. That's just my position on it. But I want to get it done. I wanted to get this thing moved last time we were here. I just didn't know that we potentially had some other stuff to put into it.
Then the, the motion would be to bring back the development agreement for final action by the council with recommended language from staff to address the concerns that you've raised.
There's a problem with that, which is that I won't be at the next council meeting.
When do you come back?
I'll be back June 24. And I think you guys are ready to go, right? You going to start working on this?
Yes, we're, we're actually ready to move on the project.
When?
We can, we're actually, I have, I have the ground staked. Will Dan said that they'd have plans back by the end of the week, so we're actually ready to move on construction.
Can we put a contingency on it so then you can just work out this potential legal issue within the next few days?
I think we could indicate that approval for the LED message component is pending further modification of the development agreement and approve the balance.
I just got to be clear again, it's not about the LED signs, not about any of that. It's about the physical structure and whether or not anything could be attached to those because we got four of those, no.
Three.
Five.
Three over the road signs.
Five. Because both two and three go over the roadway.
Yes, but they, they don't have an LED on it.
No, 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 I know. I'm not even talking about the LED. I'm, what, what if we wanted to attach a banner to the physical structure and not be part of the LED?
I don't think that would make, I don't know if, if code would allow us to put a banner over, over the can lever sign or not. That would, you know, we would have, I'd have to talk to a, a, a traffic engineer to see whether or not that could even happen. Because it could obstruct the, the traffic signal, and in the case of the DOT panel, it would block the communication for direction. So I don't see where you could actually add a banner to, to those structures. It would probably cause a public safety issue.
Just from an aesthetic standpoint, I mean, those are designed to look a certain way. We start hanging flags and banners off, you kind of defeated the purpose. But certainly to have access to the LED, you know, as you're talking about, is a very reasonable.
And then throw in the banner structure also, separate.
The one that's currently there.
The one that's currently there. It's going to stay.
The banners would be subject to a totally separate sign permit, which would be on an annual basis, I presume.
I'm, I'm assuming they have some permit somewhere for that banner sign.
Well, so then without, I'll just say that, then let me give direction to staff to find and dig through and find how that structure came into being and why it's there.
So that would, to get access to the banner, if that, if that is permit, like I said, I'm assuming it's permitted somewhere, that would require some modification to that permit separate from this. Because that is a separate permit.
You could also include in your motion that any permit for the existing banners across the right of way would be subject to further review and not approved without council action going forward. If that's something you want to have some say in, the use of those banners over the right of way, theoretically, the LED panel would take the place of some of those functions. And there are safety issues if we have too many banners across there.
So the, the LED panel is, is apple we can take a bite out of on this pass. The physical, the physical banners, we'll, we'll have to look at that permitting process and ask them to come back with a modification like this that allows, or some type of agreement, I even know if it needs to go to, to council, but some agreement with the city manager approving that there is access to that panel.
We could build our own banners too. They can't be that expensive.
Well, I, I'm, I'm actually though, a little bit concerned that we have something strung across the roadway and nobody knows when and how and why.
I'm, I'm certain there is, but it's.
Right, no, no, I understand, but.
You know, I don't know where the building permit for your house is either. I'd have to go dig through the files and find it.
Don't, don't look into anything. But you know what I mean? I.
But I think, I think if, I think if the, if the banner were an issue, would that be this subgroup of the council that would consider, is that considered a separate issue?
Well, we're addressing a comprehensive sign program and that is your function as, as the three. So it's certainly within the scope of that review. And you could make that a condition, that that banner be further reviewed by staff and that a report be brought back and that the applicant would have to take direction as to any future decision of the council as to the use of that banner. That could be a condition of your approval or, or made a condition of the development agreement.
I guess that raises another question in my mind, which is, I, I, two questions. One is, why do we need both a man, a banner and electric signage in roughly the same place, if I understand correctly? And secondly, what's the nature of the electronic signage? I mean, you know, you've got bulbs this big, you've got messages rolling, you've got high density.
Well, the, the message isn't rolling. The city sign code requires that we have a static image that changes, so it, it doesn't roll. It just, it just changes, it has to hold for 15 seconds. So I pulled that code out of the city code and made sure that we adhere to it in the comprehensive sign program for safety reasons. I would say the primary use of the LED board is, one, two.
So it is LED?
It's an LED, it's a LED messaging, it's mostly a text, text messaging board. So first of all, it, it's used as a welcoming message. I would say it's key to directing people to events because we, we have multiple events on a weekly basis, so it'll easily get people over to the Drayson Center versus Wong Curly or any other areas that we may have. So I, I think it'll be very functional and unfortunately, we're a big campus and I've been up to UCR, several campuses, there, there's this inherent problem of getting around and knowing where to go. So we're hoping that that'll help resolve that.
I like all of that.
Yes, exactly, parking, yes. Or if, if the road happens to be closed, you know, in, anything like that, yeah.
So all of that makes perfect sense to me. Why do we want to retain banners across the road then?
That was at the request of the marketing department that they still maintain the banner. So when I had a traffic study done and the traffic engineer came back, he evaluated that we could retain one of them as, because it wouldn't be obstructing the view of the other communications.
But that, that doesn't answer my question as to why do we want both electronics and banner?
Marketers want it.
Okay.
I think a banner allows for a different type of message. So there's different graphics, pictures, a little bit more lively than just the LED letters flashing for 15 seconds and then flashing off again and flashing back on. So it does, it does allow for some different type of.
The banners I've seen have all been lettering, so I, maybe, I'm not driving down Tippy Canoe or Anderson often enough.
It does, it does allow for something different and something maybe more appealing or a different way to get a message out. And probably even for a longer term messaging to where I would assume the LED would be for things that are going on now, that banner allows for advertising that, for things that are weeks.
I've got no hangup on it. I was just curious, it didn't make intuitive sense to me.
No, it's okay. So where are we at at this point?
I'm ready to finish hearing Conrad's presentation.
I think we've, we've hit the end of the, I've run out of steam. You guys wore me down. I think we hit the end of the presentation. We're in kind of the public comment. There's a real look, the only thing we didn't cover is that there is some also tree banners to go on the, the streetlight poles down Anderson and around the campus. They do the same kind of thing, the same messaging, city logo, and theoretically would have the VA logo on the bottom if it was around the campus, and the same type of art, and then the, the whatever inspirational message that goes with that. So that it really would be kind of a more of, not necessarily wayfinding as much as the others, but something to really add to that attractiveness of that Anderson campus, Stewart Street corridor as we bring the, bring people into town. And with that, you guys have hit me for all I'm worth.
So the question.
Yeah, I better bring a blanket if we're going to cover all that. This is, this is actually the, this is what, what you have approved previously. So what we've really talked about is the substantial changes to this and kind of the, an implementation of this. But the, the entire package, if you have specific questions, we can go to it. But this is pretty much what we've, what we've covered before.
I'm just looking at page 20. It has, it gets a broader view of the city. And there's a number four that says page three in yellow and has what's supposed to be assigned.
Page.
Number one, I understand. I guess I need, don't understand what that number four says.
Where's page 20?
Page 20.
This one.
Threshold elements sign for season.
Here, he's back here, okay. He printed out the PowerPoint version, so it doesn't have the page numbers on it.
Here, we can grab Charles.
Threshold is the upper right. But, I mean, yeah.
Well, see, there were colors.
Oh, yes, okay.
If you look at what's on the screen, the upper, kind of the middle upper is the threshold signs.
So, what we did is we projected out potential phasing, knowing that obviously we were locked into phase one. Phase, and phase two could change. So, we're just saying potentially that this might be the next threshold sign that we would be able to be number two or three. But we also had in there that, that phasing number could change subject to campus transformation, knowing that that needs could change where we might want to start on a communication on number three. So, I just needed to sketch out something that made sense when we first started.
So, this is projecting out beyond my political career.
This is going out several years and knowing that, we just know that the needs in five, 10 years are gonna be different than they are now.
So, yeah, we, basically, we said, okay, these are the spots we probably need this and then took just a wild guess on what some type of a sequence that would be. You know, if the VA comes up with a bunch of money for signs, then the sequence would obviously change.
10 years ago, that sign would have said, beware red light camera ahead.
So, you know, another thing to think about, too, is like emergency access to sign, especially the LED stuff. So, in case of like an EOC activation, if we had a natural disaster, flooding, things like that, that should also be talked about in whatever agreement. Because I think that messaging, maybe you guys already have.
So.
But we will work that out. That's, makes sense, that there's some, some ability for us to put emergency messaging on.
Because you guys will be able to do this all remotely, right? You don't have to question.
Yes, it's all cellular communicated. And I don't know if it necessarily needs to be in the development agreement or if it's just something that we alter on the actual sign program. Because we have language in both. I can go in either document. Because a lot of times we reference from the development agreement back to the sign program. So, we could do it either way.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we can get there and I'm sure we can make it. So, it's not, there's not any crazy stipulations. We're not asking for all that much. But my only concern is if we don't codify it and we let it walk away, we'll end up, somebody else will end up having questions about it down the road. And it's just the right way to do things is to make sure we put it in black and white.
Ultimately, I guess my summary comment is kind of to restate something I already said. This has been much needed for a long time. It's aesthetically very attractive. It looks well thought out. And I appreciate your patience explaining and helping some public servants feel like we're doing our job to ask the right questions. But I appreciate it and I think this is gonna look very good. But I think the issues that Councilman Duper raises are legitimate, too. I mean, if our farmer's market, which is a community market, and it's there for the benefit of all community members, including students, faculty, and other constituents, if it significantly strengthens that enterprise, then I think that's worth publicizing, too. So, I think he raises a legitimate point and I would appreciate you taking that back to whoever you're reporting to for consideration. Thanks.
So, how should we structure this? City attorney? Should we approve it and license it for a limited time contingent upon receipt of written?
Well, I'm not clear on what the consensus is at this point, whether you would want to bring it back again for final approval of an amendment to the language of the development agreement addressing the issue of the temporary banner in the right of way and/or the use of the LED message panel. Or if you'd like staff to do that.
My concern, although I think we could do it that way, my concern is if. My concern is if we don't bring it back, that it might lose some significance. And if there was a, an inability to get to some type of an agreement, you know, these are the types of things that just kind of get forgotten. So, I guess my commitment to everybody, both the institution and the residents and the businesses and everything, is to try to make sure we do things as transparent as possible. And so, my direction would be to bring it back and bring it back as soon as we could bring it back. And, I mean, these aren't intentional delays by any means, but that's where I stand. And I'm open to further discretion or persuasion. And if there's anybody in the public that wants to comment about it, I'm open to hear what people have to say.
My preference is to try to get something with a contingency and approve it upfront. That would be my preference. Is there some way to structure this so we could do that?
I guess my preference, just so we're all on the table, is that in the spirit of collegiality, we ask that the city administration work collaboratively with the university since we have a good, strong collegial working relationship to sort this out. And if they can sort it out with our involvement, then we accept whatever they come up with. If there seems to be some impasse, then it can come back here. That would be my preference.
But when would the approval occur?
I would say we approve it tonight. And assume that's gonna work. Well, yeah, no. Not everything's black and white. I see hues of gray in here. I'm comfortable approving it and leaving it up to city administration and the university because I've got full confidence they can work through this and make it acceptable for both parties. So, I'm supportive of approving it tonight without coming back here.
So, then how would we structure it?
Is that your thought, Mr. Mayor, as well?
If we were to prove it tonight, yes. How would, how would we?
Well, then the motion would be to approve the minor modification 19-061 and the development agreement with an amendment to be drafted and approved by city staff that would require a review of the, any current permit for the temporary banner over the public right of way or banners. And with an amendment to the development agreement that would require the applicant to work with the city on a collaborative basis to include informational and directional messages for community events as approved by city staff in the future.
And would that motion, if approved, potentially delay implementation of the proposal we've heard tonight?
No, the review of the banners, the existing banners could take place over whatever period of time is required. That would not affect the, the construction of the new signs. The amendment for the message content, again, would not affect construction.
Because I'd like to be able to support moving this project forward. Because I know this has been in the works for a long time now, I'm assuming. Yeah, there you go.
The amendment would not slow anything down. It would simply affect the use of the signage in the future, the message content.
Because I have confidence that if Loma Linda University Health leadership and the city leadership sit down and talk, this will be an easily resolved issue.
And actually, if we're just talking about the temporary, the existing temporary banners and the messages that would go on the LED panel, that could all come back for final review by the council without any delay, even if it were months down the road, I would think, yes.
So, then how would we word the motion to, to make that?
Well.
So, I would make a motion that we approved the physical structures, but that actual wording and signage and cooperation and use of those structures has to come back in a separate.
How about just the LED part? Because the construction is for the fixed signs, right?
Yeah, well, Public Works already, Public Works has the final word on, on the directional communication. So, we're only talking specifically the LEDs.
The LEDs, yeah.
Why don't we include a condition to the development agreement that says upon construction of the new LED panel, the applicant shall cooperate and coordinate with the city as to the use of the panel for community events, messaging and directional information on a reasonable basis as approved and that an amendment to that effect shall, shall be approved by the city council prior to use of the LED panel. And that at the same time, the, any ongoing use of the temporary banners that currently exist shall also be subject to further review by the city council in coordination with the future use of the LED panels.
Can someone make a motion to that effect?
I'm not sure I understood all of it, but if it moves the project forward, I support it.
Is that okay? Can we, can we repeat that? Barbara, did you cut?
We've got a tape.
Barbara's recording everything. There you go. I think if I understood it, in layman's terms, I don't have the sophisticated brain power that you do.
In layman's terms, we're approving the, the minor modification and the development agreement with one added condition to the development agreement, which will require council to take a further action to approve an amendment to the development agreement addressing the use of the existing banners and the messaging that will take place on the LED panel.
To include community activities.
I don't think we have to get into that because that's what that will be.
Yes, that's the purpose.
Prior to that action, that stuff doesn't.
That amendment will have to be approved by the city council, laying out the rules for the use of the LED panel and any ongoing use of temporary banners prior to the LED panel going into operation.
Okay. Since this is the guy that's gotta take this back to Loma Linda University, you track that and does, will that work for you guys?
I got it.
That should give us plenty of time to have these discussions and bring it back.
Because I don't think, I think we're making a mountain where we don't have a mountain, frankly. You know, we may have some staff issues, but I don't think this is a big deal.
We've worked really well with staff and presented to city council before. You guys have all been very reasonable. So, I don't think why this won't get resolved sooner than later.
Whatever Barbara has recorded, I move right now.
I will, I will second it with an amendment that we put a date certain on that because I don't want it to trail off indefinitely. So.
Yeah, let's just, let's just handle it at the next meeting in July. That, two meetings from now. That gives a month and a half, or a month and a half to work it out. Plus, I don't think we want to put a restriction on the banners before that time.
No, no, that, my intent was, at such time as the LED panel goes into operation, we would.
Well, I'm not comfortable with that, so that, I don't want to stop this process. But we're not, we're not addressing the issue of the banners. And that was my concern from the beginning. So, then my direction to staff, if we approve this, is to bifurcate the two and to pull the permits on the banners and we more closely address that. Because I don't want to wait for two years to deal with banners.
But when you, correct. But, but when you say pull the permits, you don't mean withdraw the permits? You mean review the permits?
Review it, see what.
I'm sorry, I probably wasn't clear, but the amendment tonight is to put some teeth into your request so that the LED panel would not go into operation except as approved by the city council as part of kind of this comprehensive review of the banners and the use of the LED. And that should all be able to take place, hopefully, by the next meeting. We can pull those permits, see how long they've been in place, what the intention was at the time they were approved, and see how those banners would coordinate with the new LED panel and whether or not they're necessary or, or for what purpose they would be used going forward.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be construed that if there's a sign up on the banner right now, it's illegal and has to come down by.
No, no. We're simply reviewing that. But theoretically, once the council reviews that and gives some direction, you could specify at what point in time the banner would come down if it's no longer needed. And presumably, at the time the LED panel goes into operation would be the appropriate time to make any changes on a comprehensive basis. So, we've, you can make your decision immediately going forward, but you could leave the existing banners in place until a different function takes their place.
I want to see what happens in the next couple of weeks to see what, if anything is found related to those banners. So, let's, let's do that. Let's bring it back. That's the date certain for that piece and then I'll support, if you're okay with that amendment.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I just, you know, I want to do everything we can to encourage the, community events such as the farmer's market, which has been struggling. But at the same time, it would be, it would not be reasonable to ask Loma Linda University to have a permanent farmer's market banner up there because we're trying to boost our business. So, I don't know where you find the middle ground on that, but I'm convinced there's gotta be some with reasonable people. So, I'm comfortable with the amendment.
So, the motion then would be to approve the minor modification 19-061 and the development agreement with the modified condition as I've indicated. And continue the item for further amendment to the development agreement to address these issues at the July, July 9th meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. I didn't, I didn't hear the third aye.
I said it.
We talked at the same time.
Aye.
Thank you. And no opposition. Thank you, that was approved unanimously and we will see you back on July 9.
Thank you.
And are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, then we're adjourned and that's the last of our three agendas. Thank you all for coming.